Good evening and welcome to our fiscal year 24 public hearing this Wednesday, March 8th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Please note we are live streaming on our YouTube channel and the recording will be available on our YouTube channel afterwards. I'll invite you to please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
I would like to introduce our school committee members and administration in attendance this evening. On my left I have Mr. Dina Marino, Mrs. Martelli, Mrs. Conrad LaBarento, and Mr. Powers, the acting superintendent. On my right I have Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mrs. King, Mr. Dolan, Mr. Marrera, the vice chair, and I am Mrs. Holbrook, the chair. We also have in attendance this evening Ms. Liz Berry, the acting assistant superintendent, Ms. Tala Babalola, the business manager, Ms. Natasha Robishaw, the district treasurer, Mr. Michael Schantz, the IT director, Mrs. Judy McDougall, our recording secretary, and other members of the admin team are in attendance. In accordance with the rules of public forum as defined in Massachusetts statute, Chapter 30A, 20, and with Bridgewater-Rehnham School Committee Policy, VEDH-E, these are the guidelines we will follow for the hearing. First, please note that this hearing is for informational purposes and the school committee will not vote on the budget as presented this evening. At the conclusion of the hearing, I will entertain a motion to take the budget as presented under advisement. At the school committee meeting scheduled for March 29th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the library of the Rehnham Middle School, the budget as presented will be considered and a vote will be taken by the full committee at that time. For the purpose of tonight's hearing, our budget subcommittee chairperson, Mr. Dolan, will present the budget. We will then ask our acting superintendent, Mr. Ryan Powers, if he wishes to add anything to or comment on the presentation. Following that, I will entertain any questions or comments from members of the committee. We will then ask for any public input. In conformance with the rules of public forum and our school committee policy, please note that any citizen wishing to speak before the committee should identify himself or herself by name and address. Our policy requests that each speaker limit themselves to three minutes. In accordance with the rules and with the permission of the chair, all citizens shall speak to the full committee through the chair and shall not address individual members or administrators. Any committee member may direct questions to any speaker through the chair in order to clarify comments of the speaker. All questions or comments must be related to the budget presentation. At this time, I would like to invite the committee members to take a seat in the audience, and I will now recognize Mr. Joe Dolan as the chairperson of the budget subcommittee to present the budget. Mrs. King?
Just to clarify for the public, since this public hearing is a little bit different, this is a question and answer. So as normal meetings, we have a public comment period where we cannot comment or respond for the public hearing when you're at the podium. As she said, through the chair, we can answer questions. This is a question and answer time as well.
Correct, as long as it goes through the chair. Thank you.
Yes.
We'll let everybody have a seat and then get started. Good evening. As Mrs. Holbrook said, welcome to the Bridgewater-Rehnham Regional School Committee FY24 Budget Hearing. As we make our way through the slides, I would ask, I would like to ask you to jot down any questions you may have and hold them obviously till the end when we have our public comment hearing, portion of the meeting, I should say. As noted on each slide, there is a slide number. You may want to jot that number down so if I need to go back to it while we have any of those questions, we can make note of what slide and therefore get there a little quicker. To begin, I think it's important for us to start with a little background and some history of how we as a regional school district receive our funding. As noted on this slide, the Student Opportunity Act transformed how funding is calculated for all districts statewide. You'll note on this slide, the last bullet specifically, the act did set the state minimum aid to $30 per student with the total target of the local contribution of 59%. In FY23, the state minimum went up to $60 per student. And this information and all information, if it came from a DESI source, is sourced down at the bottom of the slide. On this slide, you will see our funding come, how our funding comes year over year. You'll see on the left-hand side, it's a step-down approach. We start with a statewide foundation budget. We receive a portion of that foundation budget, and then that 59% local contribution from our member communities. And their 59% contribution is brought in on income effort and property effort. Property and income percentages are applied uniformly across all cities and towns and to determine the combined effort. So that is not something that's done town by town, that is uniformly done to keep everyone The factors that work together to determine Chapter 70 aid, obviously within the foundation budget, it's our enrollment, and it's based on the district's October 1st numbers. So for this budget, our foundation number comes from our October of 2022 numbers. The wage adjustment factor and inflation. The local contribution is the property value, income, and municipal revenue growth factor. Moving on. So it's important again that we acknowledge our member communities. I want to take a moment and recognize the members of the town council who are here, Mr. Lindy, Mr. George from Bridgewater and from Rehnham, Ms. Riley from the Board of Selectmen, and Dr. Pre Windowski from the Rehnham Finance Committee. Thank you for joining us this evening. I want to point out that the state minimum contribution is on the top line for each year, and then the actual contribution from the member towns is below. You will note that each, each year, obviously, our member communities do give us more than the minimum state contribution, so we obviously acknowledge that and thank them for that. You will notice in FY23, as per our regional agreement, we have not received all of these funds yet, as we receive those on a monthly basis through monthly payments from the member And then we have our district contribution. So that's the third piece of our foundation, and those funds come from within our district itself. So we have our fees, which are rental, activity, and athletic fees, Medicare reimbursement for certain special education students, interest earned on investments in our accounts, miscellaneous receipts, which include things like previous-year funds returned to the district, circuit breaker reimbursements help to offset the cost of special education, and finally, our excess and deficiency, which is similar to our member towns. We are able to certify monies left on, at the end of the year to our E&amp;D account. The towns, in similar fashion, call it their free cash account, where we as a school district call it our E&amp;D. The monies left at the end of the year are certified by vote of the school committee at our March meeting, and the money can only be spent out of excess and deficiency by vote of the committee. This year, you'll note that the district will be taking $1.5 million from this account to offset the assessments to the towns. So on the next three slides, you will see how Bridgewater-Rehnham compares to our, on per pupil spend, to our DART districts. You'll note that DART, that the District Analysis and Review Tools, which is the acronym for DART, turns the department's vast amount of data into valuable, easily consumable information. The DARTs offer a snapshot of districts and school performance, allowing us as users, as districts, to easily track select data elements over time and make sound, meaningful comparisons to the state or a comparable organization. Please note there are two items here. DART districts can change every year and often do, and the state assigns those districts. We as a district do not select our DART districts, and we do not assign the districts. Those come assigned through DESI. And to be clear, you'll notice that many of these districts are not necessarily our neighboring districts. They are throughout the state, so that's also important to note. And then on each of the next three slides, BR is highlighted in green, and the districts are sorted by student spend, which is the third column in. We also provide some more details, such as percentages of students that fall into one of the state's reporting populations. We also share with you the student-teacher ratio. Please also note that the student-teacher ratio is based on October 1 enrollment data and the number of certified staff. This does not mean just teachers in a classroom. The state includes guidance counselors, speech and language pathologists, OT and PT. All of them count towards the, the student-teacher ratio. So you'll notice we were in, just above Dudley Carlton in 2019, and in 2020, unfortunately, we did slide into last place for the DART districts for spend per pupil, and we actually unfortunately remain there as well for FY21. You will note that our percentage of state-reported population goes up year after year or remains the same. So this is 2020. Again, we're in the green, and then in 2021, we are again in the green. The 2022 numbers from DESI have not been released yet, that's why we don't have a slide for that. So, so that's our history, a little bit how we get our funding. Now it's time to look forward and continue to move the district in a path, to do a path forward. As Acting Superintendent Powers has reported to the school committee, we've developed a path to excellence for all of our students, and with that in mind, the student success plan and our path to excellence have been developed based on DESI Comprehensive District Review, which we have done, the achievement data, which is our state testing, and obviously our learning loss due to COVID-19. And you'll note that our budget is reflective of our collective commitment to excellence in education for all of our students. So with that in mind, on the left-hand side of this slide, you will see a list of staffing positions that were included in the FY23 budget and filled. On the right-hand side, you will see the proposed positions for the FY24 budget. These staffing requests will continue to move the district forward on our path to excellence. You'll note we have two relative service provider positions, an instructional support position in STEM for a coach for teachers, two special education teachers, one for each member community, a civics teacher to fill, fulfill our state-mandated civics course, two instruction, two introduction, sorry, to foreign language teachers, again, one for each member community at the middle school, and then 14 educational support specialists, three for the Merrill School, five for the Mitchell School, and six for special education, which would be used district-wide. So with that, we also every year look at our 10-year capital plan for operations and maintenance, and the school committee has determined these projects to be included in the FY24 budget. You will note that each member town has a different list of capital expenses by building, and then based on student enrollment as of October 1st, 2022, the district's specific capital is divided by member towns on the far right-hand side of the slide. And then each member town, so Bridgewater is here, Rehnham is here. Every year, we also look at our five-year capital plan for technology, and the school committee has determined these projects to be included in the FY24 budget. You'll again note each member town has different capital expenses based on their, their buildings, and then the district-wide capital again is divided based on enrollment data as of October 1st of 2022. And we do a five-year capital plan for technology because obviously, technology is an ever-changing field, so we only do a five-year plan there, and that is updated by our Long Range Planning So we then have the breakdown by towns. So we show you with all of the staffing requests, all of the capital expenses, debt, our contractual obligations, we present these numbers to you this evening as the FY24 budget alongside the FY23 budget, so you can see the comparison. So you have our assessment to each member community, our capital, our debt, to make up the total for each member town. And then the total assessment, our state aid this year did go up. It was $29 million last year. It is now $33 million this year. It did go up $3.3 million from last year. Last year, we did get a $4 million increase, so we, we did see a increase in state aid. And then our local aid, which is district funding and our E&amp;D. So we will be taking that $1.5 million out of excess and deficiency, as we mentioned, and then we also account for local receipts, which are fees and items that I had mentioned So this is our FY23 versus 24 budget by category. You'll note that each category, state reporting category, is over on the left-hand side. These numbers are the state code numbers, and these are the category titles. As a reminder, debt is held by the district on behalf of the member towns, so that is down here at the bottom. You will note debt has gone down from last year, last year to this year, there is debt coming off of the roll. The estimated per pupil spend down at the bottom, down here at the bottom, is an estimate, is an approximation because the state has not given us those numbers, so we as a district did what we could to crunch those numbers. They are not by any means certified by the state. So our, our student spend with this budget goes from $14,800 per student to $16,078, $73, sorry, which is an increase of $1,273, or an 8% increase on our student spend. The, the total budget did go up, $9 million, a little over $9 million, and a total of 10%. So our total budget is $98,750,420. So next steps. So on, as Mrs. Holbrook mentioned, on March 29th, we will vote to adopt the budget, the FY24 budget. We will take any feedback we receive tonight as a budget subcommittee and work this budget more if needed. So we obviously encourage everyone to, to comment on it if you have it, if you have a comment. And then in May, the town council will vote on the town's budget, which includes the school budget, and then Rehnham's town meeting will be held on May 15th. Some quick acknowledgements. I'd like to take a moment on behalf of the budget subcommittee, Mr. Powers, Ms. Berry, Ms. Macedo, who is our retired business service director, Ms. Babalola, Ms. Robishaw, Ms. McDougall, the administration team, many of whom are here, our principals, our assistant principals, the town of Bridgewater, Mr. Dutton, Mr. Salmati, the town of Rehnham, Mr. Barnes and Mr. LaCivita, the finance director, and again, acknowledge the town counselors and members of the Board of Selectmen and the finance committees from Rehnham. We thank you for attending tonight, and I will turn this back over to Mrs. Holbrook.
Mr. Powers, do you have any comments or anything you would like to add?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, just I want to echo Mr. Dolan's comments about the towns and their support. We had several proactive meetings with both towns. They are always very beneficial anytime we can collaborate, have a better understanding of the, you know, the financial situations of the towns, but also we can share with them, you know, our asks and our wants and our needs. So those meetings have always been very beneficial, and I know we'll continue to collaborate and work together. I also want to thank the administration that's in attendance, not just for being here this evening, but for all their efforts in developing this budget, and certainly, members of the community and their, your support. You know, Mr. Dolan referenced our collective responsibility. We all do play that role in, in making sure our students are successful. I think when we look at the positions brought forward, they were done so in a very thoughtful way. We started the process back in the fall, as early as October, when we started to talk about the, the needs of the district. Mr. Dolan did share what some of those needs were based upon, and obviously, we looked at positions that we felt were going to have the greatest impact, not just teaching and learning, but also operationally, because we have to balance that. You know, we, we do need things such as dump trucks and plow trucks along the line, and at the same time needing textbooks and classroom teachers and the such. So trying to do that, that fine balance is never easy, but we felt as though we put the, the, our best effort forward. And again, I think the budget that is presented tonight is fair and represents some of the needs of, of the district.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Okay, the floor is now open for school committee members. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Dolan, and members of the budget committee. This is a thankless task. It's a Herculean task, and I appreciate what you guys have done. It's amazing. We appreciate it. Just a few questions, just to level set folks. You referenced somewhere in here about a 41% state aid level, but if we look later in the presentation, it's roughly a 33% number to the towns, to our district, because the towns go above and beyond the state foundation budget. Is that correct? Is that why the numbers don't quite jive there?
So, Fitzgibbons, I just want to get to this.
State foundation budget, 41% stated.
Yeah. What number?
Three, sorry.
See, that's why I said.
Yeah.
Don't, don't misnumber.
I don't listen very well. I'm sorry.
Yes, that is exactly why. Yep.
And so, and so then, if we look further, further in, the state minimum contribution on page five, we're, we're roughly between the two towns, somewhere north of $12 million above the minimum state contribution that's required already.
Correct.
Gotcha. No, I just, I just, I just want to level set people because if they go through it and they're thinking, oh, well, why, why did we say this and says that? Buh, buh, buh. Okay. So that, that said, it looks like it's about eight and a half to 9% increase in assessment to each town?
Yes.
Roughly?
Yeah, roughly about that. I can give you.
I, I just want folks to understand roughly eight and a half to nine.
Yep. Actually, it's eight, 8.59 to Rehnham and 9.63 to Bridgewater.
Great. Perfect. Thank you. And, and could you highlight any differences between this budget versus the preliminary budget set forth by the, the acting superintendent at the last meeting?
Sure. I think the, the biggest piece is the staffing request that Mr. Powers put before the budget subcommittee, and, and knowing what we have faced in the past and working with our member communities and what they're facing as communities, and, and how long it took all of us to get our Chapter 70 funding numbers this year, that is, I think, the, one of the biggest changes, is the sheer number of, of staffing that he presented to us and that we bring forward to the committee this evening.
I'm just looking for a number, sorry.
Oh.
You know, are we, are you, the budget committee recommending a bigger number or a smaller number than the, the acting superintendent suggested?
Do you remember?
Yes, it's a smaller number.
Slightly smaller.
During the preliminary presentation back in January, I really presented two different scenarios. One, that was basically every ass that we had, and that equated to about 82 total positions. We also made the efforts to start to reduce that down as part of that presentation, so we reduced that number down to 29 total positions, and I know Mr. Dolan presented a budget tonight reflective of 22 additional positions.
Okay, great, because I, I remember, I remember that discussion, Mr. Powers, and, you know, we talked about whether that would have been the ideal situation or just a good situation, and I remember Mr. Dolan talking about, don't be surprised if the budget committee comes back with a higher budget. So I, I'm just, I'm just saying, you did not in fact come back with a higher budget.
Correct. And, and just to clarify, a higher budget than we usually come in with.
Okay. Okay. I, I, I made, I thought it was coming in, you thought it might come in higher than the acting superintendent?
No, 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 no.
Okay, great. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Mr. Marrera?
Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Dolan. I know the, at a first glance, the increase is pretty drastic, and it's probably taken some people, you know, off their toes a little bit. I just wanted to understand, what if there was just a turn-the-page budget? I know that's always a topic of conversation. What if we don't hire anybody? What if we don't do it? What if we don't spend any money on, on capital expenses? Because I want, I want to make sure people understand that. It's not just taking this year's budget and it's the same next year, there's still contractual obligations. So what does a turn-the-page budget look like?
So a turn-the-page budget for the district would be about $2 million. And again, to your point, that includes contractual obligations, healthcare, things like that, that we, we have some control over with our contracts, but then healthcare costs, we have very little control over. So it's, it would be about a $2 million increase with none of the positions that we've proposed this evening.
So that's none of the positions and none of the capital expenses?
Correct, because capital is, is separate than our operating budget, so capital and debt are separate from our operational budget. So yes, you're right, that, that would, that $2 million is to just turn the operational budget page, if you will.
I just wanted, I just wanted the public to understand, like, some of these things that we have in here for capital requests, you know, there's parking lot pavements, there's restriping of parking lots, LED lighting upgrades, new shades at schools, plow truck, dump truck, these are all operation. dump truck, these are all operational things and part of capital expenses as well, but a turn-the-page budget is not included in that.
Correct.
Could I follow up, Madam Chair? Because if we're looking at page 15, Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
It got cut off on my sheet, but that's okay. I saw 14 right before it, and I passed third grade math.
Nice job.
Thank you, Mrs. Puccinato. We see an increase of about $3.5 million in state aid that we're expecting.
Correct.
So, to say a turn-the-page budget of $2 million is really shorting us, because we'd be, we'd be reducing assessments to the town.
It would be, yes.
And so, we should at least count on 3.5, I would, you know, the 3.5 million, and hopefully, a reasonable increase from the towns, whether it's 8 to 9, or whatever, whatever it comes out to be. I think, I think there's room to grow in this budget, is what I'm saying. Yeah.
Mr. Marrera, you have a second?
Good enough.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Hamer, Madam Chair. Mr. Dolan, I have a couple of questions. I actually went back and looked at the January budget, what was presented. It actually looks like this budget from the Mr. Powers preliminary, not the high budget, but the lower budget, we'll say, the A budget versus the B budget. This one looks about $250,000 more than that one does, so it's a little bit more, it looks like. My question, though, is around some of the positions from looking at what was in the preliminary A budget versus this one. There's a little bit of change in some of those positions, so I'm just trying to understand. Originally, in that budget, there were 12 positions, and now this one's 22. It looks like they're mostly ESPs, but I don't quite, they're not, it's not equal to equal, like, if that makes sense. So, I'm just trying to understand the difference in the positions.
So, yeah, and Mr. Powers, if you want to jump in here, please, by all means.
Sure.
So, we, as a budget subcommittee, looked at our enrollment numbers in first grade, and are mindful and cognizant of our youngest learners and the impact that their education sets them up for the rest of their academic career. So, with that in mind, we know, we have heard from folks that we add teachers at that level, that's not feasible for several reasons. The largest is the space. You just don't have room to add a teacher at, or two teachers at every grade level, and adding only one teacher doesn't really make a big impact that people, I think, think they would. So, if you have a class of 27, you add one teacher, you're really only going down by three students. It doesn't have that much of an impact to do that. So, we thought it best to add another adult, an educational support professional to support the first grade teachers. It is not one per classroom. It would be a shared, a shared model, if you would. So, one ESP would be assigned to two teachers, one classroom in the morning, one classroom in the afternoon type of thing. So, that is the biggest, I would say, change, and again, that is to make sure we've got our youngest learners who are in some larger classrooms, some more educational support. Mr. Powers, I don't know if you have anything you want to...
No, I would agree with that, Mr. Dolan. You know, the benefits that we've seen from adding ESPs to our kindergarten classrooms is evident. We're seeing the data to support that. When we look at some of the mid-year assessment data compared to kindergarten, say, last year, students are, you know, averaging anywhere, you know, 20% to 30% difference in their achievement this year. You know, obviously, we would like to think that there's a direct correlation between adding and increasing staff, and then we obviously have the everyday feedback from the kindergarten teachers, so it really, we do feel as though that investment was worthwhile and will pay its back, not just now, but in future years. So, if we can replicate that, understanding that we'll never be able to replicate that at every grade level as we go up, but as you mentioned, certainly putting a focus on those early grades, we feel as though if we make a strong commitment there, then, you know, it may lead to needing additional, less additional support in the upper grades.
And one other question. In the budget, one of the big increases in items was the programs with other districts. I mean, it went from $9, but it's 36%. I was just curious if you can explain what that, what that increase or what those programs with other districts are?
Yeah, so that, those programs with other districts, it's included of the state recommendation that we increase that budget line by 14%. That is the special...
The private special education. Okay, that's what I was, okay, that makes sense.
Mrs. Martell?
First and foremost, I want to thank the budget subcommittee, because I know that task was huge. Second, the foreign language in the middle schools. I'm assuming that's inquiry?
Uh...
Do we know?
Sorry, let me just look here.
Page 12.
Thank you.
If I may, since this is my baby? Well, I think that's... This was the sword that I fell on for the budget sub. I have advocated for foreign language at the middle school level since I was on the committee, and as Mr. Dolan said, this is going to be something that we're going to have to go back and maybe make cuts between now and the end of the budget, and potentially, that might be one of them. But I wanted it out there. It's something that we feel that is important. I don't, we don't know what it's going to look like. That'll be an admin thing. Is it just eighth grade? Is it across all grades as just like an introduction to language in general, and then try and move that to become an intro to language and move some teachers down? That's something that Mr. Powers has talked to us about, like, how we move forward with that, but we wanted it in the budget, even if it's not going to go through this year, because we really want to move in that direction, and we don't want to keep putting that off to the next budget cycle. Next year's not going to be any better, so potentially...
Well, I'm happy for that as well, so I appreciate that being a...
Yeah, so, we're advocating for that, and I think focusing, you know, we try to look at our budget and say, "We need that foundation in kindergarten and first grade. We need more special education positions," and we also need to focus on the middle school level, how we can put focus on there as well. So, we kind of tried to look at where the needs are. I don't know if all of those will make it, but...
And to add to Mrs. King's discussion also, was that the reason we also looked at the foreign language is that we were hoping to then have an AP class at the high school for Spanish, so that would give them the opportunity to add that course and that.
And if I could, Madam Chair, that wouldn't be something that would happen next year. That would be several years ahead. So, just to sort of level set it, don't expect an AP next year.
No. But, you know, back in the day, right, there was seventh and eighth and going to high school, you know, Spanish II or whatever, but it did allow that, that growth, so...
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Dean Marino?
What are the two related service providers that is proposed?
So, Mr. Powers, I'll let you speak to that.
Absolutely. Tentatively scheduled right now to be speech and language pathologists. Our speech and language pathologist caseload over the last number of years has increased and even more so this year. So, we just, we feel as though there's a need, you know, when we look at how many students they're servicing, the amount of minutes that are required, we just, you know, have realized that we need to increase that staff, and so those, they're considered related service providers, but it really is targeting speech and language pathologists.
Anyone else?
Oh, yes. The two special ed teachers wanted, excuse me, each town. Is that for sub-separate classrooms, or is that just a special education teacher and the regular education inclusions?
Mr. Powers?
Sure, yes. Thank you for that question. No, that would be, right now, the plan is that would be inclusion teachers, not substantially separate, adding substantially separate classrooms. You know, obviously, our plan is to, when we look at enrollment, you know, to have one scheduled for each town. As you know, caseload fluctuates from year to year, so it could be eventually that these two positions end up on the same town or sharing grade levels, but really, the thought was to help the caseload on the Rainham side as well as the Bridgewater side.
Madam Chair, if I...
Yes, Mr. Dolan.
I do also want to thank my fellow budget subcommittee members, Ms. King, Mr. Marrera, yourself, Madam Chair. As several of the committee members have mentioned, this, having sat on this committee for several years and now chairing it, this has been a challenging process for us. This was not an easy, an easy thing for us. We did hear from many of our families advocating for positions, and we took all of those into account in our discussions, but when pen came to paper, we had to make some tough decisions. I'm afraid that we might be having to make more tough decisions in the next three weeks. So, I want to thank the three of you for working with myself and the rest of the admin team to put this together, but that's sort of...
Thank you, Mr. Dolan.
Mr. Marrera? I have to remember my last question.
Sure.
And this is just to put into perspective, if you could just clarify it for me, because you understand a little bit better. A lot of positions that we have put on over the last couple of years were part of COVID money and grants, correct?
Correct.
Can you please just elaborate to the public on how those grants have gone away, and those positions have been rolled into the operational budget? I think that may help understand what the big jump is in the overall budget.
Yep. So, there were several ESAR grants that were released during COVID, and some of those allowed us to hire staff under those, and obviously, as those funds run out or the program runs out, if we want to keep those positions on, we need to absorb those positions into the operating budget. Mr. Powers, I don't know if you want to speak directly to what those positions were?
Sure, absolutely.
At a high level, Mr. Marrera, that's sort of what we're, where the jump comes from, so...
Sure, just to give an overview, you know, some of the positions that you actually see under, say, the FY23 budget, such as the School Adjustment Council or RMS, that was a grant-funded position, and obviously, a much-needed position, but again, we were able to use some of our ESAR funding to bring on additional positions like that. Obviously, coming out of COVID, and during COVID, we wanted to make sure our students were supported socially, emotionally. We added additional nursing staff as well. You can see there, two nurses on the FY23 budget. Those, again, were moved over from ESAR grants. The additional ESL teacher, those were moved over from ESAR grants. We were able to provide some additional special education support as well through those ESAR grants, and so really, you know, we looked at, kind of coming out of COVID and obviously the last year or two during COVID, you know, what positions should we try to maintain that we felt as though the need still exists, that it just wasn't, you know, a one-time ask, that these did emerge as important positions and much-needed, and so therefore, thankfully, you know, through everyone's collective effort, the school committee put forward a budget, and the towns approved it last year, to move a lot of those positions over. We still do have a number of positions currently that are being funded through ESAR III, and obviously, you know, our initial budget that had the 82 positions included many of those positions that were grant-funded. If we could move a lot of those positions over to the operational budget, that number was reflective of that. So, a lot of our interventionists currently, or actually, all of our interventionists are currently being funded through ESAR. We really have, after this school year, one more full school year of funding, but there are other positions that are, you know, charged to that grant as well. So, that funding is unfortunately coming to an end, and, you know, we've benefited greatly from that, but yes, so I think those positions that we feel as though we need to keep, unfortunately, will have to be moved over to the operational budget.
Thank you, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to bring it up, because I don't think a lot of people outside of this table here understand that some of those positions that we currently have are grant-funded, and if they no longer, if they were to end, you know, as, at the end of FY23, and we get into FY24, the FY24 position side would be a lot heavier than it is right now, and that may come down the line in the next year or two, if we want to keep the same staffing levels, if the public feels that the supports that we have in place are needed to be continued. So, a lot of those things have been absorbed into the operational budget, but some have not yet, so it could be a, you know, that's, I just want people to understand that big jump that we see about the $9 million, which is a lot of, big sticker shock for a lot of people, that has been absorbed from previous grant positions, so we don't lose those positions.
Thank you, Mr. Marrera.
Mrs. Holbrook? I just want to make a comment, is, because within the PowerPoint presentation, Mr. Dolan presented the D-DART district piece of spend per pupil, and we've all talked about this over the last few months, and with this budget, it puts us around $16,000 estimated per spend per pupil. I just want to just say out there, and I, again, I'm thankful to the towns and their support, but I just want to say, what's here is 21. So, towns across the state, this year's government budget in Chapter 71 or 70 funding went up 8% or 9%, so everybody else's funding is going to go up. So, with the $16,000, it's not going to move us in the middle of the districts.
So, if I...
We don't know yet, but, but everybody else is also, is going up, and their spend is also going up.
So, are we just, you're right, I don't know where that'll put us on this list, but I would caution that everyone's Chapter 70 isn't going up. There are several communities that we've heard from that are not happy with the chapter's funding, the Chapter 70 funding formula, because they've lost it, state aid. So, I don't dispute the, where it would put us, I just caution that everybody's number is going to go up. It's actually not.
Going to go up.
There is a, I received an email from one of the superintendents on the regional school district listserv, and there was, he was putting numbers together of, and I wish I had printed it, I didn't, so I apologize for that, I can forward it to the committee, and it spelled out the percentage of towns or districts that are going up, and it's not the majority, so...
But even with that, even if we looked at 21s and we got in the middle, I would just like to say, if we actually got, we're at 16, we'll put us in the middle, if we got to 18, that's additional $20 million for the district and what we could do with that money. And we talk about test scores, and we talk about accessibility, and all the programming our kids could have. Without funding, we cannot do that, and $20 million is a whole lot of money, would fund a lot of things. Again, we're moving up slowly, but it also, the funding also limits our ability to add all kinds of supports and programming within the district, like foreign language, if the funding doesn't come through.
You want to? So, next, I will open the floor for public comment, and we will give everyone who wishes to address the committee an opportunity to be heard. We respectfully ask that you be considerate and limit your comments to the allotted three minutes, and the comments that you make or the questions you have, if they, they must be related to the budget that was presented this evening. We do have two people who signed up to address the committee this evening. Unfortunately, they did not give their names, but they, I can give you the first three letters in their email address. And the first one was APD. So, if you are in the audience, come on down.
And Madam Chair, this is actually interactive as opposed to usual public comment, just so folks understand.
Correct. APD, no?
I feel like we're calling off the plate, remember?
Yes, exactly.
Lights are on.
Lights are on, exactly. Okay, the second one, again, just gave an email, and the letters were C-B-R. You can come on down to the podium.
By the way. I don't know how it's coughed up. Are you complaining?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I did put my name. I don't know why I didn't show up. My name is Carol Anne Riber, and my address is 273 Summer Street in Bridgewater. I have a question, I hope this is an appropriate question, around the budget for next year. I had a question about, you mentioned fixing parking lots, et cetera. Can any of that money or potentially be thought about to fix the Bridgewater-Rainham track? track?
Uh, so we can, Mr. Powers, I don't know if you wanna take that or if you want me to?
Sure, I'm ha- happy to. Uh, the school committee actually voted and approved, uh, last year for this current fiscal year, uh, to make those improvements. So we are actually in the process, we've already gone out, uh, had a designer come in, a project manager come in, um, so they, uh, are working on schematics of improving that track. Our tentative timeline at this point is, uh, they should be breaking, hopefully, ground sometime this spring, um, and then we, it should be operational, not probably for the fall, uh, but certainly for the spring track team for next year to use it. And then obviously, as, once it's done, the community will have, you know, access to it as well. But that, uh, those funds were appropriated for this year.
Excellent. They were not, uh, Bridgewater-Rainham was not able to host any meets last year.
Correct.
Um, it's just not safe, uh, the track and the equipment. Um, and as again, you know, the track season starts in another two weeks, um, obviously probably won't be ready for this season.
It will, it will.
It's a, it's a burden, not only other schools in the district, but also Bridgewater has to provide transportation. Um, it's a huge amount of kids that are on the track team. Not everyone can run a fifty-yard dash, but some kids can throw a javelin. Um, there's a, it's a huge amount of kids that participate, it's a great program, so just wanted to, um, ask about that.
Thank you. And tennis courts.
And tennis courts.
Yes.
Funds were also, uh, set aside to, um, replace the tennis courts as well.
Oh, great.
Yes.
Um, and I have a little bit of time left, so I just wanted to say a quick word about the, um, foreign language program. Um, my son, my youngest son is a junior here. Um, I do think it's definitely worth, um, investing and taking a look at, not only, um, for the middle school, but also the high school. He's on his third French teacher this year alone.
Mrs. Meckelberg should be back next year. Right, Angela?
Yes. That would be great. Um, so it's not just, um, the middle school, but also getting the kids interested in the foreign language is helpful, but also how do we retain and keep those teachers? So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the committee at this time?
Good evening, good evening, Sean George, Gillian's Way, Bridgewater. Um, through you to Mr. Dolan, uh, great job, Mr. Dolan. Unfortunately, the slides kicked in my ADHD, so I just have a question. Can you give me the assessments without capital proposed for 2024 for Bridgewater and for Rainham?
Uh, so the assessment for Bridgewater, uh, not capital, not debt, is thirty-four million, six hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Okay.
And the assessment for Rainham, again, no capital, no debt, twenty-two million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars.
Six eighty. Thank you.
Sure. Sorry.
Anyone else?
Hello, um, forgive my voice, I've kind of lost it, and I'm short. Lisa Borodini, eleven Titicut Road, Rainham. I wanted to comment and just say thank you so much for increasing the amount per student that has gone up, um, but we're still in last place, and not all funding is equal. And I wanted to just remind you that on page seven, we saw that the DART district average funding or ratio, we're in last place for the last three years, for teacher to student. And so if we're spending more money, but on page twelve, you have less people getting hired than the previous year, we're still gonna be in last place, and there's no movement. And so I'm just asking what we can do to address that. And in particular, you'll see all the red shirts, we're all here with the BR music boosters. Um, we have thirteen hundred students in the high school plus, and one music teacher. Thirteen hundred students, one music teacher. I don't know about you guys, but when I went to high school, I went to a high school of three hundred people, and there was a band, and there was a chorus. We don't have that here, we can't, we don't have a dedicated band, a dedicated chorus. And, you know, I feel very passionately about this, as do many people in this audience, and I just wanna know what we can do, what would it take to get a second music teacher? And I, it's a legitimate question, like, what can we do to make that happen?
I honestly don't have a direct answer for it. Um, I, I, again, we presented staff in that we had to prioritize. And, and last year, we added a, uh, a music position at, um, the middle school level. Um, and, and when we look at, uh, the greatest impact for, uh, what, what positions are gonna have the, the largest impact to the largest number of students, that's what we looked at this year. So we looked at, um, obviously, for the special education positions, we have to do those by law. We have to meet those requirements, um, in order to be in compliance.
Sure.
But the other positions, so the ESP specifically, um, what's gonna have the greatest impact to the greatest number of students?
Sure, and, and I, I totally appreciate that. But I also wanna just point out that for many students, music is the access, and we're talking about kids with special needs, right? We're talking about kids with autism, kids with issues. Music is the way in, and if we don't have that, then we have to spend all this money on these remedial places where they aren't really part of the group. And so I, I just want us to think creatively, what can we do, and what can we do as a community to support the school to make that happen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the committee?
Hello, my name's Maureen Fermick, twenty Carrick Hills Tribe in Bridgewater. I would just like to, um, echo how important I think music is, and it is therapy. And when, when we're talking about coming out of COVID and social, emotional stuff and supports that student's need, music can help with, it, it touched so many of those students. Some of those students can only express themselves through music. I'm sorry, obviously, I'm not great at public speaking, but I'm very passionate at, with the music department, and I don't know how, I, I agree, I was one teacher doing this in this huge school district. So if it can't, if, nothing can be addressed in this budget, I appreciate any creative thinking for maybe, maybe a little bit in the next three weeks that we could squeeze something in, if not for years going forward, because I would hate to see another teacher get burnt out and lose another music teacher. I, I just, I'd love to see the arts and music program grow more at BF. So, thank you for all you do and any consideration.
Anyone else that would like to address the committee?
Hi, Elena Karanos, one twenty Goldfinch Drive in Rainham. Um, sorry, public speaking, not my thing either, uh, but we're looking for consideration for a school bus for our neighborhood. Uh, about half of our neighborhood is over the one point five miles, but the other half is about one point two to one point four miles. We're asking for the school committee to prioritize the safety of our children. Uh, we already have bus forty-two that comes and picks up, um, children from the neighborhood. The bus holds about eighty kids, but only carries about forty. Locust Street is narrow, it's windy. We've been told that the chief of police has signed off that he can't recommend this walkway to be, this route to be walkable, as it's not safely walkable. There's no sidewalks, there's no streetlights, there's no crosswalk, no crossing guard. We're just asking that the committee consider letting the rest of the children get on the school bus. I understand that it may need a, uh, chaperone for the school bus, and we would like to offer a suggestion of, uh, parent volunteers to not pull from your budget, because we don't really wanna pull money from all of these great programs that you guys have talked about, but we just wanna make sure that our kids get to school safely, that's all.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you all who came before the committee tonight to give your input on our next year's budget. Again, we'd like to thank Mr. Dolan and members of the budget subcommittee, um, for all their hard work, and Acting Superintendent Powers, Acting Assistant Superintendent Barry, our business, interim business manager, um, Ms. Babalola, as well as Ms. Macedo, who has since retired, and our district treasurer, Mrs. Robesha, for their hard work, um, for this budget. I would also like to thank both the Town of Bridgewater Town Council and the Town of Rainham for working with us on this budget. Our next regular meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, in the library of the Rainham Middle School at seven o'clock PM. This concludes our regular public hearing of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget. I will entertain a motion to take the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget under advisement and adjourn the March eighth, twenty-twenty-three public hearing at, what time?
Eight oh two?
Eight oh two.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Mr. Murray, or second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes, thanks, everyone, and.